Thank you for your patience. We just had a little technical difficulty, but it's been resolved. Okay, could you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's school committee meeting. We start off the meeting with the hearing of visitors, but before I do that, I've just been informed by our superintendent that today is the National Teachers' Day declared by the National Education Association. So, we would like to thank all of our teachers for doing a fine job and wish you a happy Teachers' Day. I asked when the school committee day was, but she didn't have an answer for me. But, you know, I guess every day is that. Thank you for doing such a great job with our children. We do have a visitor today who's really not a visitor. She's part of our team here at Brockton High School, Katie Balboni. Katie, would you please join us? Katie is a teacher here that specializes in mathematics, and she also does a great job with sports as a coach. So, Katie, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I'm down here to talk about Brockton High School field hockey. I've spoken with Mr. Devon and Ms. Walden. I know they've probably passed this information along to you, but I wanted to come down to you and talk to you personally and let you know how important it is to me and things that I've been doing to ensure that adding my proposals to add a freshman team here at the high school and to ensure to you that it's going to be successful. I'd also says lines on the turf. I made the mistake of not calling Mr. Thomas first, apparently. Call him first before you come here with proposals. So, if you can just look at the first part. I have a little bit of a graph and a table there, but the reason I would like to add a freshman team is we don't have a FEDA program here at Brockton. So, I've been doing my best to try and get some young girls involved. I offer free clinics in the spring. We're doing three this May on the 17th, 24th, and 31st. I have flyers for maybe you have daughters, fifth through eighth grade. They can come down. I have all the equipment. I've accumulated enough so we can tell a kid, "Just come down, try it out. It doesn't matter if you didn't know how to play." So, with that, I got 24 freshmen now. I did these clinics last year, and I got 24 freshmen to play for me this fall. We made a makeshift team. We had three games, and it was an awesome experience. So, I know that with that success, that if we have a full team this fall with more games, I know I can guarantee we'll have kids out there. It's easy to tell freshmen, "There's a freshman team. Come and try it." And I think that it brings a lot of positives to the school. One is we have more kids involved after school, especially more girls doing sports and being active after school. It gives them another set of eyes to look out for them in the hallways and care about them, their grades, you know, what are you doing? So, I guess I wanted to let you know that this is not just a piece of paper in front of me. I've been putting my heart and soul into it. It means so much to me, and thank you for having me today. And I hope you consider, and maybe, I know tonight's a budget night, but if at some point you can see if we can make this work for our kids. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Well, at the school committee, when we have hearing of visitors, we're not allowed to ask questions.
Oh.
And then, at some point, if we need to, we would take this up. Obviously, this is something that we'll discuss in the morning because of the budget issue. But we certainly appreciate you coming forward. It basically shows me how much you care, you know, and how committed you are to, you know, the programs that you're involved with. So, we definitely appreciate it. And you've given information to all of us, right?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Alves has it, so we'll make it a point of discussion at our finance subcommittee when we're dealing with the budget, because we unfortunately are going to have some budgetary concerns this year. But again, we really appreciate everything that you do, and we know that you're committed to our students.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Katie, before you go, I also want to, again, you and I have had an opportunity to speak about field hockey. And I will share with everybody, Katie makes a good point, because when you don't have a FEDA program, it becomes difficult to engage the girls, you know, freshmen, sophomore. And I will tell you, back in 2003, community schools tried to put that into our GED program. And for some reason, we weren't successful in getting kids. It might be time to have that discussion with Maxine Richardson, the director of community schools.
I should've told you. I already did. So, I went down, and there is going to be a Brockton After Dark Field Hockey Night this year for the first time. And that'll be Wednesday night, so that gives them a chance.
And I also have to tell you, back in 2001, my daughter was a senior here at Brockton High School, and they brought back the field hockey team after a 20-year hiatus, I think it was.
Yeah.
And I don't even think we had uniforms that were red and black, and we were just happy to have, I think they were hand-me-down uniforms. So, you've come a long way. I thank you for your dedication, and we'll look into this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. The next item for everyone who knows is the consent agenda. And if you don't know what the consent agenda is, it's our routine business, and we itemize it all, and we approve it unless there is an item that a school committee member or the superintendent would like pulled out for further discussion. So, has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda? Okay. Does anyone have an item to be removed for further discussion? Mrs. Clark.
Can we remove item C?
Ms. Clark.
Ms. Clark.
Ms. Clark, sorry. Soon to be Mrs. Clark.
Yes, Mrs. Wilson.
Oh. All right.
Can we remove item C of the bid review subcommittee meeting?
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Sullivan. A second on that, correct? Okay, great. So, we will remove that. And then, could we have a motion then to approve all but item C? So, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
I just wanted to do a little G, too.
Oh, okay. We will remove, you said G?
G.
G, okay. So, motion to approve A, B, D, E, F, H, I, J, K, L.
So moved, second.
Okay. Any further discussion on those matters? All in favor? Okay. Okay. Ms. Clark, could you please tell us about bid review item C?
Bid review item C in the bid review subcommittee meeting, and we'd like to accept everything in the subcommittee meeting notes except for the Kennedy modular classrooms, which we'd like to table for future discussion. There's some concern right now about the commitment of funds, so we'd like to set that aside and approve everything else but the Kennedy modular classrooms.
Great. Do I have a second on that? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Excellent. Okay. Mrs. Sullivan. Item G.
I just wanted to point out that the community school's been working really hard on the Summer Fest, which this year will be Saturday, August 16th, from 10:00 to 4:00 at Brockton High School.
You said, I'm sorry, the 16th?
August 16th, yes. 10:00 to 4:00 at Brockton High School. They're also looking for volunteers, okay? And I also wanted to point out that their children's summer program offerings are posted on the Brockton Community Schools website. There's a summer program brochure that's been very well-done detailing all programs for all ages for the summer, and that we thank Jocelyn, Meek, and the community schools for that.
Great. Okay. Any further discussion on that item? Okay.
And of course, those of you that haven't had the opportunity to go to Summer Fest, it's a great collaboration with many community groups, our school groups. It is, last year, thank goodness, the weather cooperated. It was probably the best day of the summer. So, if you get an opportunity, get out there with your families, and, you know, a lot of fun for everyone.
Great. Would you like to make the motion then to approve?
I make the motion to approve the community school minutes.
Okay. Second, Ms. Clark. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Wonderful. Well done, Mrs. Sullivan. Communications. My eyes are getting so bad. All right. Communications, superintendent's report? Oh, I'm sorry. Communication, request to use schools as polling locations for 2014 election cycle.
We have a request as we do each year. We have a primary in September. The general election, it's a gubernatorial election, excuse me, is in November, and, you know, we want to be able to approve the use of our schools as polling places, as has been done in the past. I will remind you that the November date, schools are closed for the day. The primary schools are open. We will certainly work with John McGarry and his staff, our school police officers. We work with our principals to make sure the polling places are safe, you know, for our children. At points of entry, we'll make sure that we work with the principals to assure the children's safety while it is open to the public.
For those members that have been on the school committee, this has been a point of, I would say, contention. Mrs. Joyce has raised the issue. Mr. Robinson has raised the issue. Child's safety, student's safety with respect to the traffic. All of us who have gone to the polls have witnessed some rather bizarre driving habits from some people that just aren't familiar with the sights, and they go there, you know, once a year, and they, some people are driving in the wrong one-way, and we just wanted to try to avoid that. So, when we did review the calendar for next year, that was something that we all raised. Mrs. Joyce, would you chime in on that? Because you've been advocating for that for a while.
Well, I'm a little concerned about the primary, the primary schools you mentioned are open.
The day of the primary, the schools are opened in September. So, we have the primary election, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay, so, the day of the primary, the schools are open, but the day of the general election, they're closed.
They're closed in November.
Yeah. We don't get the type of traffic for primary elections that we do for general elections. So, it's going to be very difficult for us to be closed both days.
Correct.
You know, unfortunately. But if we can be closed on the day of the primary, I mean, the general election, then it takes care of our safety issues. I think it works well with our calendar this year, too. From what I understand with the Jewish holidays, we have a little bit of flux this year. We're starting a little bit earlier next school year, so it doesn't have such a negative impact next year as it has in the past. But safety is number one.
And we're already talking about it. We'll work with our principals. We'll talk of points of entry into the building. We're looking at possibly, you know, parent volunteers, people in the building to be at those points of entry to keep it as a checkpoint and make sure it's accessible to the public coming in to vote in a warm atmosphere. So, we'll continue to work on that.
And I definitely think that parents who have volunteered for school functions, who have been quarried, properly quarried, would be, if given some advance notice, would be willing to help out at the school with respect to guiding and nudging people in the right direction and knock down hallways, you know, by accident, and placing people in the right place with respect to voting. So, we'll definitely all want to work together on that. Anyone else on that issue? Okay. Great. Madam Superintendent, next item, report of superintendent of schools.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to start, as we always do, with our student representative, who I will say her attendance has been exemplary, and we're pleased to have Jessica with us and to share with us what's happening at Brockton High School.
Thank you. All right. Well, first, I'd like to start off with saying happy National Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Appreciation Week, because I know all the teachers have been saying, "Oh, it's my week." So, all our classes have been on best behavior. So, thank you.
It's a whole week?
I know.
We get a whole week?
That's what everyone's saying in my classes. So, thank you for everything you guys do for us.
You bring a happy day for every teacher.
I guess so.
And Jessica just bailed us out, so again, thank you to our nurses.
So, we had a wonderful jazz concert on Saturday. So, thank you to everyone who participated and came. It was a really nice concert. So, that was wonderful. And in our fine arts, we have Harvard's one beautiful art display. We walk in, it's all right there, and it's gorgeous. I love looking at it every morning. Last Friday was Brockton High's junior prom, and I know I had several friends who were there, and they said it was absolutely an amazing experience. And Ms. Walden also shared with me that Shaw's, as well as the DJs, said that Brockton students are the best, respectful, and cooperative. So, thank you to all the juniors and everyone who was there. Very nice. Next Tuesday and Wednesday is a math MCAS for sophomores, so yay! I'm excited. Yeah? Everyone's already saying, "Get in your sleep, good breakfast," so get ready for that. And the Drama Club will be presenting their musical Guys and Dolls, May 16th, 17th, and 18th. So, everyone is really excited about that. It's going to be an amazing performance. So, we're looking forward to that. And the year is really coming to an end quickly. I can't believe it's already May. So, there's a lot of, Senior Award Night is May 19th. I'm pretty sure if I read the handwriting. 21st, okay. Can't read my handwriting. Oh, and Senior Award Night is May 21st. Thank you. And yeah, so everything's coming to an end, but yes, so that's what happened in Brockton High.
Well, we wish you good luck on MCAS math. I'm sure you'll do us proud.
Of course.
I can, both what Jessica said about the prom, my son attended. His dad naturally did not attend as a chaperone. I wouldn't do that to him, but he said the same thing. It was fantastic. Everyone had fun. There were no incidents, well-behaved, great time, and it just was a great event. The kids, I did drop him off with his significant other, and the kids just looked fantastic. They just looked wonderful, you know? Alison McDonald, who helps out with Guys and Dolls, I was asking her, "Oh, how did you choose Guys and Dolls?" Because we've done that over, and she said to me, "Because this year, we have the voices for it." So, it's going to be quite the musical extravaganza. She says we have some strong singers, so I would urge everyone, if you can get to see Guys and Dolls on May 16th or 17th, or the 18th here in the auditorium, please attend. It'll be a great event.
Good. Thank you, Jess. Next on the agenda is a recognition of a donation to our Pluff Academy, and I'd like to invite Principal Michelle Nizarella to share with us some facts and interesting information about this donation.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Vice Chair Mr. Minicello, members of the school committee. Thank you for allowing me the time to come in here and introduce to you, it's certainly with a great deal of pride and my honor, to introduce Mr. Stephen Prone. He is the trustee of the Prone Family Foundation, and over the past three years, he has made a total of $19,000 donation to Pluff Academy. The money's being used for field trips, for purchases of chairs to make our auditorium a little bit more comfortable for evening and afternoon events for our parents, for our students. His monies have also supported field trips outside of the school community. Our students have benefited. Our staff has benefited. I know that he's most interested in continuing working relationship with Brockton Public Schools, especially through the Dollars for Scholars program. He's working now with Superintendent Smith and members of her development and grant team to grow that program, and he does have an operating budget of over $600,000. Of course, we're interested in that, too. My pleasure, my honor, Mr. Stephen Prone.
Well, we certainly appreciate your generosity, Mr. Prone. There are plenty of people that love to donate to the Brockton Public Schools, but certainly not many with the numbers that you have provided us with. We really appreciate everything you're doing and would love to continue to work with you. Everybody in Stoke loves me. You know why? They don't know me.
Steve, it's been a pleasure, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for our students in Brockton, some of the needy students, and our families certainly appreciate this kind of support.
Okay. From a Spelman person, thank you, Ken.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. With our student population and the needs of some of our families, donations like that really make a huge difference to our school community. So, we really do appreciate your efforts and your generosity, Mr. Prone. So, thank you once again. Madam Superintendent?
Yes. I'd like to invite now Dr. Ethan Kancel to come up and to share with us. Many of you know we have been involved in the park field testing this year. This involves our Hancock School. It involves Raymond School. It involves Brockton High School, and it involves our BB Russell School and Edison Academy. So, we have learned a lot of lessons. It's been an interesting year this year, and I'll let Dr. Kancel talk to you a little bit about the park experience, and also to let all of you know, we do have a subcommittee meeting coming up under our curriculum where we will be talking at length about park in the future.
Do we have to move?
Thank you very much. I had a very humbling experience tonight. I printed out what I was going to say, and I can't read it with my glasses on, so I therefore have my notes. I'm here tonight to single out and praise three groups of people who really did extraordinary service to the Brockton Public Schools. One of the most important findings that I had in preparing for this was, none of them really wanted to be singled out for praise. But I view my job to report, you know, as the person in charge of research and assessment, to report the facts to the school committee as I see them. So, it's my job to report these facts, that these folks actually were pretty happy if I'd have just kept it quiet, but here we go. Superintendent Smith talked about the park field test. As you know, Massachusetts and other states are trying out the park assessment. It is our next-generation assessment to replace the MCAS, possibly. And it really presented a challenge. It's a technology challenge because it's an online assessment, and it's also an assessment of the common core, which it's very rigorous, and it's also technologically challenging. It's very good. We learned a lot of lessons from it, and we also learned that it was extremely difficult to implement. The bugs aren't out of the system. It is new. We're doing the shakedown runs now in the future. We're hoping it gets a lot better. But because of that, as I said, it really required a lot of work. We do an awful lot of technology in the schools. We have a lot of online programs that a lot of students are part of. We do not experience this level of difficulty and challenge requiring, you know, hands-on touch. It was a lot of work, but let me just get right into the heart of things. I wanted to thank two principals who had the great pleasure and opportunity to host the park, and of course, they're sitting on opposite sides of the room, but we have Stephen Shaw strategically placed in back of me of the Hancock, and Carol McGrath representing the Raymond School. Here's what's amazing about those two and their entire staff. We went in to do park, and I say "we," it's just, you know, park, the state announced park's happening in your school. And rather than complaining about, and they had a lot to complain about, this was a very lengthy, all-encompassing, consuming activity. And I said, "Okay." And we were trying to train and teach people how to administer this test, which required a lot of work by teachers to do technical things, and we had no idea what the test would look like. They never announced it to us. We said, "Well, I think it'll look, oh, it looks like this." So, that was part of the challenge, but they rolled with it. They did their absolute best to put the best environment together they could for the students. There are no results, which is interesting, but it's also positive in the sense that there were a lot of technological glitches, not on our side, on Park's side. Park is also learning how to do this. The schools were just incredibly positive, and their concern was, "How do we create the best environment for our students?" And they're also, and I was there every single day in both the schools. You could actually see the wheels rolling in the teachers' heads. If this is what the assessments are going to look like in the future, what do I have to do in my classrooms? You could see it happening. I want to thank you again, Carol and Stephen. Could not have been more positive. The entire staff, thank you to the both staffs. As I mentioned, the technology department, this was, as I said, it was a great opportunity for us to see how our infrastructure would hold up. This was just a field test. We didn't have every single school in the district doing it, but unlike most districts in Massachusetts, we had every student in the tested grades in these two schools taking the test. And that was very different from one class here taking it, one class there. It puts different stresses on the system, and so it was great that we sort of had that stress test. That said, it was much more challenging than we anticipated because the test itself was so buggy. We would have kids being tossed out and tossed out, and we kept testing and testing. It wasn't on our side. But I really, I asked Dan Vigent, who's the director of technology, I said, "Dan, you know, who should I really single out for praise?" He said, "Ethan, you have to single out the entire department." And here's his logic on this one. There were four people who were dedicated full-time to this project. So, they were in the schools in the morning, in the night, fixing it, getting the tablets, 200 tablets. You have to touch each device to get the right operating system, to get the right update, because the day before the testing, they announce a new update and a fix. It was just crazy. So, he said, "When those four people are spending all their time in these schools supporting Park, the other folks are picking up all their work. The work doesn't go away." So, I personally need to thank Neil Fama and Rick Chang for helping me out with the whole getting the network started when no one, including Park, knew what we were doing. James Lofton and Bill Welch, who just, "Welcome to Brockton. You know, here's the biggest test ever, and good luck. It's real buggy." We had Louise Pyris, as I mentioned, you know, "People are holding down the fort when everyone else is flat-out doing Park." Katie Buckley, just unbelievable support, and obviously, Dan putting it all together. So, thank you, technology department. It was a very heavy lift. We learned a lot. We really did. It was a very positive experience. Finally, I want to thank the, oh, I keep forgetting. I'm trying to go quickly, and as Heather Ronan will tell you, I'm a very slow speaker. The Office of Teaching and Learning, also known in the vernacular as the OTL Crew, just incredible group of women, and I can't thank them enough. Now, this is, I independently heard the exact same thing from them. I said, "Ethan, you know, we were just doing our job." And I said, "Okay, so, when you were there all day, you know, helping us do trainings, helping the students and the teachers administer the test, who was doing your work?" And they said, "Well..." I said, "So, when did you do your work?" "Oh, at night, over the weekend." You know, that's what these people do. They just work, and it's incredible, the amount of effort that they put out, the amount of time they put out, and it was just, it's just an all-hands-on-deck effort. And one, as Steve Jobs would say, one more thing, I have to thank personally Dr. Heather Ronan. She is our very own Park Fellow. There are not many fellows in the state, but she is one of them. She knows more about Park than anyone, including, I think, the commissioner. The thing that is most impressive what Heather did was she mastered the incredibly rare art of putting three hours of work into one hour. Now, that requires her to talk real fast, drive real fast, and do multiple things at the same time, and I do nothing but annoy her for being slow. But she coordinated everything, and really, thank you so much for all the work you've done. I will be giving a much more in-depth, we'll say one big round of applause, I'll be giving a much more in-depth report to you next Tuesday to really get all of the facts out about what we actually did with Park and what we learned. But I wanted just to say this, and I want to make this very, very clear. This sort of effort, you'll never hear it from any of these folks, the three groups of people. This is not nine-to-five work. It's not even close to it. The amount of effort they put in, I sent an email to Kathy. I couldn't believe it. That's what makes Brockton special. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen. You certainly echoed those thanks to each and every one of you. You know, there was not a day that went by that we didn't have communication, information coming down from the DESE, from Pearson. It was pretty much an unbelievable endeavor, and we are very, very proud of what Brockton was able to do. I'm also very proud of the parents. You heard talk all around of opting out. We don't really get, we don't get any re- We don't really get, we don't get any results this year, other than what we can take away from having field tested. Our parents stood by us. They supported us. I look forward to going to the Hancock and the Raymond during their PAC meetings to certainly address any parent feedback and find out what their thoughts were when the children went home and shared. It certainly couldn't have happened, Dr. Cancel, without your leadership. You took that on from the very beginning, along with Deputy Superintendent Liz Barry. And, you know, I am very, very hopeful when they choose a new system, whether we stay with MCAS, whether we go into a Park testing, which I think is the next generation of testing, and I see that coming fast and furiously. You know, thank you for all your efforts.
Does anyone have questions for Dr. Cancel?
Next Tuesday meeting, is that it?
Yes.
So we can kind of vet out some questions. I'm interested in what the plans are for next year, possibly.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Ethan.
Superintendent Smith did reference a curriculum sub-meeting, and as Mrs. Joyce points out, it'll be next Tuesday, the 13th?
Yeah.
I think we're over at the Arno, Mrs. Alice?
Yes.
At the Arno School? Seven or?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock meeting. So if anyone would like to learn a little bit more, certainly an open meeting, you're welcome to attend. I was fortunate enough to visit the Hancock and witnessed some of the testing firsthand. Mr. Shaw, who is the principal at the Hancock, did a terrific job. I think he always gives credit to his staff, which was performing, you know, just on all cylinders. And what amazed me was, you know, I was really observing the children as well, and they were intense in terms of really focusing. You didn't see anyone wandering off. I mean, they were focused on the tablets and, you know, doing what they needed to do, despite a few adults, you know, strange adults being in the back of the classroom nosing around. But it was a good rollout, I think. There were glitches, certainly, but they were glitches with the system, so to speak, the testing itself, not the implementation by the district. So it's going to be a challenge because, you know, with that much technology required to test all students, I mean, it's just going to be incredible. And it's a, as we've discussed here with school committee members and Superintendent Smith, it's a huge cost to try and provide every child that needs to take that test with tablets and/or computers. It's a huge challenge, and it's one of those sort of unfunded mandates right now. It's sort of in limbo land, but these are the things that school districts, that get things that get imposed on school districts and, you know, "Well, how the heck, that sounds like a great idea, but how the heck are we going to pay for it?" I mean, so these are the things that, these are the things why we have Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello. I will tell you, Friday, I attended, along with Dr. Cancel and Deputy Superintendent Barry, the Urban Superintendents Meeting, which focused on Park. Commissioner Chester was there. He heard the debriefing. Our experience was the same as other urban districts. The good news was, yesterday, we had an opportunity with a legislative luncheon to talk about some of our funding concerns, but one of the things, there is a technology bond out there for the Senate right now, and we're very hopeful that if and when that is passed, it will help us to continue to move the district forward with supporting some of our technology needs.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cancel, Dr. Cancel. One quick housekeeping note that was pointed out to me, Ken Rake, could you make a motion to allow the Election Commission to use the schools as a polling location for the 2014 election cycle?
Motion to approve using the schools as polling locations for our 2014 election cycle.
Seconded by someone? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? I don't want the mayor yelling at me for forgetting a detail, so, okay.
And next is a presentation by our Barrett Russell and Gilmore Schools. I'll invite the two principals, Principal Natalie Poehl and Dr. Helen Verga. Again, I go into these schools and you just can't help but smile. It's a contagious place. The children are learning. They're wonderful centers for our very littlest students in the district. And I feel very special about this presentation tonight because you will remember, Principal Poehl, I got to take part during the pajama night with the, and I loved it.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, Vice Chair Mr. Minicello, school committee members, for having us here to talk to you a little bit about the Jump Start program that is happening now at our two schools. Two years ago, Ann Smith from the South Shore Conservatory of Music approached Suzanne Martin, Director of the Adult Learning Center, about getting into an urban district to do their Jump Start program. They were working in Hall, but they really wanted to expand. So they started the program off at the Adult Learning Center with a preschool class there, and then Suzanne, because the early childhood people are a tight-knit bunch, sent them over to the Gilmore. And I met with Ann last year at this time, and she was very interested in expanding the program, bringing it to the Gilmore with four classrooms. It would be a weekly program, and then it would be a visiting musician every month. In light of the Barrett Russell opening in the fall, I sent them over to Natalie and said, "Let's also expand it there if we possibly could." So the program is now at the Gilmore and the Barrett Russell, and there's plans to try to expand it. It's a wonderful program, and Natalie has a slideshow that we can give you some more information about it.
Is there anything I have to do special with this? Maybe just wake it? I'm like, okay. Wake it back up. So yes, we did start our partnership with the Conservatory this year, and right now we have it in, they only had funding because it's completely funded through the Conservatory for one class at the Barrett Russell, but we were able to squeak in two. So currently, they are both in our structured English immersion classrooms at the Barrett Russell, and as Helen said, we do have plans to expand it to all classrooms at the Barrett Russell for next year. Just some program objectives from the Jump Starts program. Students and families will gain access to early, frequent exposures to rich arts experiences. Students will demonstrate literacy skill acquisition through arts-integrated curriculum designed to engage all learners. Classroom teachers will gain confidence in creating and executing arts-integrated lesson plans. And then families will continue this learning at home, and we'll talk a little bit more about the Musical Pajamanites coming up. So there are three components. Every week, we have a Conservatory Specialist that comes into the building, and then monthly we have visiting musicians. So that's the piece that takes place during the school day with the children. Our teachers email lesson plans to the Conservatory Specialists, and then they're choosing books that connect with things that we're doing in the classroom to enrich their experiences. And then there's a professional development piece for teachers, and then there's the family piece as well. So there's three components that come together. If, I don't know if this will play. Will this play?
No.
I think we had a technical difficulty with this earlier. Can you hear it? So in this clip, the visiting musician was, of course, a bassoonist. Our students in the REACH program were working on farm animals, so they were connecting through song with things that they had been learning in the classroom as well. So we've had trombonist, we've had keyboards, we've had guitar, we've had all kinds of different instruments coming in, and the kids are just fascinated. And they get to, this oftentimes, there's a component where the kids will get to play the instrument as well, so they get very excited.
It looks a little different at the Gilmore than it does there. And at the Gilmore, it's inclusion classrooms that have the weekly reader, but it's inclusion and substantially separate classrooms that come together to have the visiting musician. And it's very interesting, and the halls are filled with music when they're there, and it's just a wonderful experience. The children absolutely love it.
This year, we did a professional development with the teachers. So we had a three-hour workshop where Conservatory Specialists worked with the teachers to empower them to integrate music and movement into their own literacy activities and build a repertoire of songs and chants that would be engaging for all their students. And we used a variety of literature to do that. And we have plans to purchase a resource kit that would be added to our literacy closet that would have books, it would have instruments and scarves and all kinds of things that teachers could use to kind of bring those strategies into their daily instruction. And then the last piece is the Musical Pajamanites, and through the BPS Innovators Grant this year, we were able to fund three of them. And as you heard Superintendent Smith say, she got to come to our first one. We were doing the story Bringing the Rain to Capiti Plain, and so that night was filled with lots of African music and movement, and the parents loved it. We had about 15 children that night, and we were hoping that word will spread and it will grow for the next one. Just a few more pictures from the Gilmore School, and I love the quote, "One of the only activities that activates, stimulates, and uses the entire brain is music." And does anyone have any questions for us?
No? Well?
No.
Mr. Robinson.
The next pajama night, we actually were supposed to have one in May, and there was a scheduling conflict with one of the specialists, so our next one will be, I believe it's June 3rd.
Okay.
So, and I can get that information out to send that to all of you, if you'd like to stop by. And we have the, it's Tuesday mornings at the Barrett Russell for the Conservatory Specialists, if you ever want to come and see it in action in the classroom.
And it's Thursdays at the Gilmore.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have a special Winnie the Pooh here, a set of pajamas you're planning to?
I don't. I don't. Green and gold.
Pajamas are optional for the adults.
Oh, gosh. He's referring to his Packers pajamas. All right, we won't talk about that. Anyone else? Mrs. Joyce.
Seeing my own granddaughter relate to music, it's the one thing that every child, no matter what their ability levels or what, you know, where they are, it's just something that just, you know, inspires them, and it just gets them moving, and it's just the one thing that brings them all together. And it's just so exciting when you can bring music into the classroom like that. What a fantastic program. I love it.
It is. We're very lucky to have it. And the visiting musicians are quite entertaining because they've never really performed, I don't think, in front of a group like ours, and they have lots of different expectations. And one day, Grant was there with his guitar, and he was, I explained to him who was, you know, audience would be, and as I was walking by later on, I could hear, as I walked by, he said, "Everybody, we're going to get in two lines." Good luck with that, Grant. And I said, and they had a great time. They just had a wonderful time.
That's good. I love the program. Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
And again, going back to your pajama night, it's great when you see little kids running into a school with their slippers, their Spider-Man pajamas, and their little bathrobes, and they were so far, they really weren't sure about being in school with those pajamas, but they loved it.
They did.
A fun night.
Thank you for coming.
And fun for families. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Ms. Joyce's sentiments. I think it's a great program, and anything that we can do to encourage learning and expand, especially, I know with Helen's kids, it just brings in great joy into their lives, and I think it's a fabulous thing, and hopefully, we can expand on it and bring it to other schools and help out other groups of kids. Great thing.
Good. Great. Thank you. Okay, next item, introduction of administrative interns.
So our administrative interns, which is always the highlight of our year. I'm going to invite Dr. Kathleen Moran to come up and share with you, but I will tell you, and I had an opportunity to address the interns the first day of their administrative internship, they were all there, very happy and excited and looking forward to a great experience, and I will remind all of you that I was an administrative intern. So I'm very proud of that. It's one of your Grow Your Own programs. I'm looking out in the audience, I see Michelle, I see so many of you, Maxine, all of us, Laurie, we took part in the administrative internship program. So there's a lot to be said for what the Brockton Public Schools offers our teachers and our future administrators. Dr. Moran?
Good evening. Thank you. I have the great pleasure of introducing our 2014 Administrative Internship Group. This year, we have 14 administrative interns, which really speaks to the talent and the drive across the district of the educators and their interest in programs such as this, and also getting a better view of what goes on outside of their own buildings. So I'm going to ask each one to stand as I introduce the person. The first administrative intern is Michelle Allman. She is the Champion High School math teacher. This year, Michelle will be assigned to, thankfully, me, and to June Sabe, the principal of the Huntington School and Executive Director of Learning and Teaching pre-K to 5. Next, we have Aga Barret. She's a Brockton High School ESL teacher. Aga will be working with Soraya DeBarros, the Director of the Parent Information Center. Tracy Shula Montero, Brockton High School Social Science Teacher. She will be working with Cynthia Burns, the interim principal of Champion High School. Next, we have James Donido, Pluff Academy General Academic Bilingual Teacher. Jim will be working with Aldo Petronio, the Chief Budget Officer. Next, we have Anna Christina Eastman, Gilmore School Special Education Pre-Kindergarten Teacher. Ms. Eastman will be assigned to two locations, the Office of Learning and Teaching and with Dr. Helen Verga at the Gilmore School. Next, we have Gary Gueto, Brockton High School Adjustment Counselor. Gary's assignments are with Barbara Lovell, Principal of the Ashfield School, and Jose Piñero, Director of Bilingual Education K to 12. Next, we have Maria Lobo Andrade from the Pluff Academy, School Adjustment Counselor. Maria's assignments are with Dr. Clifford Murray, Principal of West Middle School and Executive Director of Learning and Teaching 6 to 12, and Jose Piñero, Director of Bilingual Education K to 12. Next is George Lewis, Brockton High School Guidance Counselor. Mr. Lewis will be working with Carol McGrath, the Principal of the Raymond School. Carolyn McKinnon, South Middle School Social Science, sorry, Science, Social Studies Teacher. Carolyn will be working in the Office of Learning and Teaching as well. Next is Lisa Mosley, Bilingual Department Citywide Language Assessment Specialist. Lisa will be working with Valerie Brower, the Principal of the Brookfield School, and with Laurie Mason, Director of Special Education. Kelly Domenico, Raymond School Title I Teacher. Kelly will also be working in the Office of Learning and Teaching. Mary Beth O'Brien, Huntington School Expanded Learning Time Facilitator. Mary Beth will be working in the Office of Learning and Teaching as well. Amanda Palmer, Angelo School Art Teacher. Amanda will be working with Dr. Kelly Silva, the Principal of East Middle School. And finally, we have Adam St. Pierre, I'm sorry, Adam St. Peter, Angelo School Grade III Teacher. Adam, we'd be working with Ryan Powers, the Principal of the Baker School. So welcome, and thank you all.
And I'm sure you will all learn quite a bit from your, we'll call them your mentors. We have great instruction and leadership here in Brockton, so I think it will only benefit you all. You've been assigned to some very talented and gifted people, so. And I know many of you, and I know how gifted and talented you all are, so congratulations once again.
Good. And next, I'd like to invite Chief Budget Officer Aldo Petronio to do the introduction of our FY15 budget.
Do we want your intern, Mr. Donido, to present for you tonight, Mr. Petronio?
Sure, I'll hand him a minute. He's all said he can take over.
Okay.
I'd like to report on the fiscal 15-year budget we're preparing. Approximately about three weeks ago, the superintendent submitted what is considered the superintendent's budget to the school committee for the school committee's review. That budget is a budget that's prepared that doesn't look at the revenue side of the picture. That budget is what the superintendent feels the school system needs in order to run for another full year. So in that is all of the additional requirements and benefits that they would like to see. That budget is given to the school committee, which the school committee then will review and determine what we can afford to do and what we can't. But in order to get to that point, we have to But in order to get to that point, we have to wait for an appropriation from the mayor. The mayor meets with the chief financial officer and prepares a budget for the entire city and gives every department appropriation. And we're one of the departments that will receive an appropriation. So once we receive that figure from the mayor, the school committee then looks at the overall budget and tries to get us balanced and adjusted with that figure. In most years, we always request more than we receive, and that's because there's always more that we can do. There's never a year where we say we can get by with less. So this year, the funding that we receive comes from Chapter 70 from the state. The state sets up guidelines on how much money should be spent in a district our size. This year, we were a little disappointed that that figure did not have the same amount of growth as it had last year. Last year, for about the same amount of students, a little over 400 that we increased, we received a little over $11 million in growth. This year, for pretty much the same number of students, 439, we're within about 10 of last year, we received only $8.5 million. So we're about $2.5 million short of what we received last year for funding. So once we receive the final budget from the mayor, we will then try to do what's necessary with the school committee to adjust our budget to meet those figures. So we'll be meeting again starting this Thursday and then routinely every couple times each week until we get a budget that is balanced, that we feel that works within the appropriation we received from the mayor. And then we'll have a public hearing, and we will await for the city council's final approval of all the budgets in the city. So that's where we stand at this point.
And once again, I will remind everybody, yesterday, we had the opportunity, we had a number of city councilors present, school committee members. We had all our elected officials, our three representatives. Senator Tom Kennedy sent one of his aides. And we very much shared a picture of concern about Chapter 70 funding in a district like ours, an urban district with high growth. We talked about, you know, opportunities for grants. We talked about decrease in our Title I funds. We talked about unfunded mandates, such as the large amount of money we pay for our homeless students. And our district does an excellent job, but it does become a burden on our school budget. We talked about our technology needs. I thought it was an excellent meeting, very open dialogue. I know how hard our legislators, our senator, our city council, our school committee, I know how hard everybody is working. We will continue to do that and, as Aldo Petronio just mentioned to you, you know, present a balanced budget. I can't say I'm pleased with the numbers that we're seeing, but we've certainly been through this before, and we'll continue to look at every avenue for funding that we can.
Anyone from the committee? Yesterday's meeting with our legislative delegation, I think, is a good exercise. It provides an update for the legislators to know where we are at, what our needs are, where our growth is. Special ed, our ELL population continue to grow on an annual basis. And naturally, it takes more money to educate students that have specialized needs. And we certainly need to let them know where we are at so that when they're up there listening to different bills, listening to different issues, they know what will affect us in a positive way and what will affect us potentially in a negative way. So that's why it's good for us to periodically meet with our delegation so they are aware of the state of the district. And we've made it clear what the state of the district is. And they are all very, very open to, you know, our needs, and they are certainly working hard on our behalf. But these types of periodical meetings, I think, benefit our student population, our community. Because if we don't tell our legislators what's going on and what we need, who is? And we have, we have in the last, I would say, seven, six years, had a very good relationship with them and have, you know, periodic reviews and talks. Years ago, there was very little communication, but things have changed. Mrs. Joyce, you know, you are a veteran member of the school committee, and, you know, I know that you've talked to our delegation, you've talked to, you know, Mrs. Cronin, Mrs. Cannavon, and it's what we need to do every so often.
And you've talked to us much more than in the past. And so it's really great. We really do have that back and forth with them. It's a great relationship.
So that's where we are with that.
And can I say one other thing? One thing that we actually talked about, and I can't believe we're talking about this. Don't forget Brockton's history and all of this with ed reform. When you talk about the McDuffie case back in 1993, brought about, you know, equity for our students in high-needs districts. And one of the things we talked about is it time again to take a look at that. If Chapter 70 is not working for us, you know, we as a district have always been front and center, making sure that our children get what they need. So we'll continue to look at every avenue.
Back in 1993, when that case was determined, we were always a gateway city, but the numbers and the needs are continually increasing. We had some data yesterday presented to us, and it showed, you know, the numbers, the percentage of our English-language learners when I was here and graduated. And it was something like, I think it was like 8%. But now it's close to, you know, 30-some-odd percent. I mean, so that tells you that in that period of time, so you can only imagine, in 1993, when that formula was established, you know, we're now, you know, 11-some-odd years beyond that. I mean, so, am I math wrong? 20. Yeah, what am I saying? I'm off by 10 years. Yeah. Holy mackerel. No wonder I'm an attorney, right? But I can divide a third. Isn't that funny? But I'm just saying, so when that case was established, we were a gateway city, but not like today. Things have changed so much that that formula has become antiquated, you know? And not only Brockton, you know, the Fall Rivers, the Lawrences, the Lowells, these type of gateway cities. And, you know, it might be time to relook at a legal option. So we shall see.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not on that issue, I don't believe. Okay. Next item, superintendent's entry plan?
I think I have to get ready here.
Okay. And the committee has a copy of the entry plan. I can tell you that this was wonderful reading this weekend. I'm sure all of us went through it. In your packet?
I have to tell you, I am finally, I'm excited to finally be at this point, and I guess I can't believe that it's May 6th. It has been kind of a whirlwind of a year. It's been challenging. It's been very interesting. And there are too many people to thank for what you're going to see tonight. But I want to clarify before I begin to talk a little bit, you know, about an entry plan. So the information that you're going to get tonight is everything that was gathered from the time we began this process. And the process actually began, I was elected last March. Soon after that, I brought together during June what I call trusted advisors, a group of people. We talked about what it was like to transition into a district, and a district where the superintendent had been part of the district from the beginning of her career for 37 years. We decided to go with a little bit of a different process. We also elected a chair. Our elected chair was Richard Bath, former school committee member, professor at La Salle College, and a good friend and confidant to me certainly in this process. We came up with the idea of what we called, not necessarily an entry plan, in the beginning we called it a transition plan. All during the summer, we started to come up with a structure. We came up with different subgroups. We talked about questions that we would pose. And one of the key decisions that we made, when you talk about an entry plan, many times the superintendent is front and center with every group that they're speaking to entering into a superintendency. I decided I wanted to try a different avenue, and that avenue was although I would very much be part of setting up all of these subcommittees, and I'll talk to you about that information this evening, I would not be present during the actual subcommittees. I would have them headed by what I call internal and external stakeholders. I felt it would allow for the free flow of ideas, and I would concentrate on being out there, working and getting information from community groups, from parents in the community, the youth voice. And bringing all of that together would be what our entry plan is all about. I will tell the public out there that this is the finished product. This is certainly available to anyone that would like to see it. Most of you, certainly all the school committee, has this. And it's quite exhaustive. And again, when you talk about an entry plan, it is gathering feedback, ideas, from not just our Brockton Public Schools administrators, our faculty, our staff, our students, and our parents. And it looks at our district's programs, it looks at our services, it looks at our organizational structure. We did engage the community, the business leaders, in conversations about what are our strengths in the district, what are our challenges, and what are our opportunities? And you will hear me talk about that at length tonight. When we get this information, one of the things that you will see is by, before the end of June, before we start July 1st, we will have a three-year strategic plan for the district, which we are presently busy working on now with all of this information that we have gathered. You know, we're able to bring about all constituencies to the table to work together now and in the future for the benefit of all our children. I included as many voices as possible, as I said, districts, school administrators, business leaders, college/university representatives, community stakeholders, including our parents, our elected officials, fire our police officials, students, and our union officers. And I will also mention during this time, I have had two full-day retreats with our school committee to also get their thoughts as we move the district forward with this entry planning. It was imperative to me to collect as much in-depth information about every aspect of the school district, whether it was through school leadership teams, new teachers. I listened to people's experiences, the challenges they faced, and their successes. One of the things I want to tell you is you have a staff that is dedicated, high-energy, innovative, and they're all committed to going that extra mile to help our children succeed. As I mentioned, when we had these school committee retreats, some of the things we looked at, and we brought together and made sure that our subcommittees would continue. You're bargaining with seven unions. We're looking at policy manuals, we're looking at facilities. We have now gone into interest-based bargaining, which we had a lengthy training with our Brockton Education Association. We held six listening tours, six evenings where I spent time in the district with over 450 parents that were willing to come out and share their feelings, the strengths of the district, the challenges, the weaknesses, the things that they felt we needed to keep at all costs, and those things that we needed to look at. I met with the PACs. I met with the SuperPAC. I continued to meet with the Special Education PAC. I went to a number of Title I breakfasts to speak with parents. We met with the media outlets, WXBR, a number of opportunities to have interviews. I sat down with Steve Damish from The Enterprise, the Globe South reporters, and our Brockton Community Access our cable. The best thing I did was listen to the youth voice. To get out there, I have been to Brockton High School probably a total of four or five times. I continue to meet with our youth voice. It is a very interesting perspective of how they have seen their education in the Brockton Public Schools. Many of them are seniors, and they're still willing to put themselves out there and share better things for the students that come after them. I also went to many, many community events. And of course, the school committee continues to get what's called the superintendent snapshot each week. And I hope you will, you know, confer with me that there were many community events. I've had many speaking engagements. NAACP, Democratic City Committee. I recently was at the Shoup Gala, the Rotary Club, the Metro South Chamber of Commerce, Bridgewater State University, the YMCA mentor rallies, and much, much more. And with all of that, I was able to gather information about the feelings about our district. As I said, the timeline began during the summer. Come the fall, we were able to, on, I believe it was September 19th, we brought together all of our different groups, and you'll see the key areas we focused on. Learning and teaching, culture and context, operations and finance, organizational efficiency and effectiveness, and the youth voice. These continued through all of the months. In November, we actually, the phone call came in October. During this process of entry planning, I received that phone call from the DESC that told me our number was up, and it was our turn to actually go through a district review. We recently received our findings from the district review. It is well over 100 pages. So again, during the entry finding with all of the information that we were gathering, we had the district review, which took place for a week in November, a debriefing after that. We've continued to have dialogue with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We take this very seriously, and this is part of all of the information that we're using as we're putting together our strategic plan for the district. In looking at, again, the timeline, you'll see up there the events that took place on February 1st, we had the school committee retreat. And on the 26th was when we actually changed from a transition plan to a strategic planning. We have had three sessions. We have brought together over 35 of your administrators and your principals in the Brockton Public Schools, who meet for either full days or half-day retreats. We're working in smaller groups. And again, that will be the strategic plan that you will see before the end of June. So in looking at our, I'm going to start with our culture and context team. And I'm going to tell you that Dr. Sal Torasi and Jose Piñero headed up this group. And we were looking at the organizational climate and culture and the impact on our instructional environment. Some of the strengths that came out were our alternative pathways we provide in the district, our support services, our effective partnerships with our community partners. And again, it is much more extensive in the entry plan. I'm just going to share with you a snapshot of some of the information we received. Some of the challenges under culture and context. We need to understand our students' cultures, the languages, their needs. We need to increase cultural competency and proficiency in our entire district. College and career readiness opportunities and pathways for our English-language learners. We need to look at our SEI population and have equity in our schools. That's our structured English immersion classes. Assistance for our bilingual parents when they're registering, and understanding all of the forms that are required before their students enter school. Some of the opportunities from this group. New regulations on student discipline are coming. Supports for new programs and alternative pathways. An induction program for our new teachers that will include cultural proficiency. And tonight, when you are introduced to a number of our interns, they are already hard at work at providing a structure for that to happen. Excuse me. Professional development in areas for, in these areas for all staff. English-language classes for the parents of our English-language learner students. There's nothing more important than a parent that is able to converse in English, be able to support their family, being able to support their student in the Brockton Public Schools. It makes for success for our students. Student-community service and volunteering. Volunteer opportunities with faith-based organizations, retired seniors, business organizations, and parents to support our schools. Under learning and teaching, with Deputy Superintendent Liz Barry and former Deputy Superintendent John Jerome heading up this committee. The committee, again, students having access to high-quality instruction in an environment that prepares them for college and career. The strengths of our district. Alignment of our K to A curriculum and assessment to the Common Core. District-wide focus on math instruction, increased math proficiency throughout the district. Middle school professional development expanded. English-language arts teachers utilizing Common Core in our classroom curriculum. Brockton High School students graduating with skills and knowledge to succeed in college and career, and core values, 21st century learning. Our challenges. Inability to invest in technology the past few years. An impediment to teachers' ability to teach 21st century skills and to prepare for PARC. Brockton High School, looking at the technology and our textbooks in classrooms, a challenge. Achievement gaps between groups needs to... Achievement gaps between groups needs to be reduced. Our SPED population, our English language learners, our high-needs populations. Our opportunities. We are presently negotiating with our Brockton Education Association and we are reviewing our school calendar for professional development opportunities for our teachers. Looking at scheduling for common planning time throughout the district, that is an opportunity. Technology devices supporting learning. Time to define what is college and career in Brockton. Instructional technology expanded. We need to support and train our teachers in this area. Under organizational efficiency and effectiveness, Dr. Kathleen Moran and Dr. Ethan Cancell. Identify organizational efficiencies to streamline operations and support our schools, our strengths. Communication from central office to site-level leaders, our principals. We meet regularly, share information, ongoing initiatives. We talk about new programs, we talk about our challenges. Content area administrators that are highly skilled and share their knowledge. Our use of what we have for professional development time currently. Training, data review, curriculum destruction, excuse me, discussions. I think I need water. Providing opportunities for educators, our train-the-trainer model. Our challenges. Increase in enrollment necessitates additional staff and administrators, especially in bilingual, SPED, early childhood. More centralized support to ensure all schools, all level students can transition smoothly. Vertical articulation between our teachers, our administrators, from elementary to middle school to high school. Our human resources, they're dealing with extensive new initiatives. In our human resource office, we have ed evaluation going on. Baseline Edge, web-based program coming on to support our educator evaluation. New fingerprinting requirements. Teacher recruitment, diversity of staff. Transitioning from the middle school to Brockton High School, we need to outreach to families. We need to be doing those open houses to make sure that we're there with the Spelman's, with the Southeastern Regional, with all the schools that share the best that they have to offer. We can certainly compete with the best we have to offer. Lack of uniformity in some of the programming in a number of our schools, our middle schools were mentioned. Our grants office needs to be broadened, include development, alumni support. Train teacher leaders in buildings to write grants with our grants office to build capacity. And as you hear me speak, I know our school committee members are saying we've already supported some of these initiatives and I thank you. On that note, can I take a drink? I don't want to take her on. Our communications office expanding to support our bilingual families. Central office needs to review all programs system-wide to decide on the effectiveness of those programs, make recommendations to teaching and learning. A central inventory of our programs. If we find a program is working, what we do is showing results, is possibly buy in bulk. Our instructional technology, not adequately staffed to service the needs of 21st century schools in the district. And I continually talk about the email I received at 3:00 in the morning from Dan Vigen in early November, panicking when PARC was coming onboard and reminding us that we needed to bring on a couple of more technicians that were promised. And thank goodness, we were able to do that. You hear about the work that they were doing this past fall to provide us with that opportunity with PARC. All change in this district must be justified by data. Our opportunities. Leverage talent, outside groups, businesses, CEOs. Review our organizational and financial structures, identify areas of cost savings. And our Metro South Chamber of Commerce has offered to sit with us and review some of these structures. And the one thing that you have heard me talk continually about is a facility master plan, a 20-year plan, a long-range vision. Because as we continue to grow, we have very, very few spaces to put those very special children in those seats so we can educate them. Our operations and finance, Deputy Superintendent Thomas and Aldo Petronio. Review the current status of operations and finance effectiveness of fiscal, human resource, facilities, communication, transportation and informational technology functions. Our strengths. We are presently still recovering from budget cuts. At central administration, we have put together a couple of additional positions to support our teachers. Our grant writers, these are our strengths. Our principals and staff believe current budget process distributes money evenly. We're looking at a paperless system of documents where we can scan documents in rather than have paper and this is something that presently is in progress. Cost savings. Things such as rather than buying ink in bulk and having the ink dry up, it's very, very costly. Looking at a system where again, it's something we go online, you're able to put in what your needs are, less waste in the district. In technology, a strength, we have a new video conferencing system. Student technology internships where we actually bring some of our students to do internships. Replacing traditional textbooks with computer-based information. In science, we have digital textbooks. And again, as a strength, what is mentioned, and you see this mentioned as a weakness previously, what was mentioned in this subcommittee was our facility master plan. It presently is in progress and RFP is out there and it's something that we'll be continuing to support. Our COPs and our REMS grants strengthen the safety factors in all our buildings. What are our challenges? Not adequately resourced to meet the needs of increased enrollment in bilingual and SPED populations, staffing and space needs. Class size is too high. We have Level 3 schools where this becomes a challenge. And when you look at some of the districts that we're competing against, and I've told you this, when Boston Magazine comes out and you look at those number 1, 2, 3, you look at those high-performing districts, what they have in classes in first grade are 15 students. Our classes are 24, some of them 25, and we're hopeful that they won't go higher. That's very, very difficult to compete with one teacher in a classroom with that many students. Older facilities in need of repairs. We have new housing projects proposed in Brockton. The Boulders is almost finished. The Trinity project is something that's happening in the city. And we welcome everyone, we welcome families, we welcome children. But that should tell us that again, we have a need to make sure we can educate these students in 21st century classrooms. Our challenges, our reliance on state funding on Chapter 70. We have a lag of 18 months in real time for funding. When we look at those large increases, sometimes between October 1st and the end of the school year, you could see close to another 100 to 200 youngsters that are in those classrooms with again, money that wasn't counted in an October 1st report. Additional computers are our challenges. And when you look at an economic downturn, and just on the news last night, I'm not sure if you saw that we were number one in the state in foreclosures, we have a lot of families that are homeless, over 500 families. Again, I said this earlier, it presents a huge need, huge need in the district. We are prepared to provide for those families, but we need the support. Our opportunities, again, is, and I'm going to keep saying this as many times as I can, our facility master plan. Professional development for our teachers and all staff. A review of Chapter 70 funding for bilingual and our special education students. Recruitment strategies for teachers and all staff, incentives, looking at diversity. Elementary staff, common planning time. Funding from non-traditional sources, partnerships, collaborations. Our development office is already at work in looking at every dollar out there. How can we collaborate with other organization in Brockton to bring opportunities for our children? Our youth voice, our students' perspective on curriculum, extracurricular opportunities, facilities and other youth issues, some of the strengths. They are so proud to be part of an award-winning high school at Brockton High School, just as proud as we are, that comes across clearly. They're proud to have opportunities with advanced placement classes, IB classes. They're proud of their boxer buddies program, supporting our special needs students, peers with peers. And nothing was more evident than last year when I did have the opportunity, Mr. Minichello, to attend the senior prom and to watch all those youngsters, you know, welcomed on the dance floor, sitting together, having a good time together, a memory for a lifetime. And I thank those students for doing that. Our arts, our athletics, our music, our drama programs. Some of the challenges. Our students were very insightful, they were very serious. They talked to me about schedules of students, sometimes hampered their efforts to access a variety of courses, their electives. They're looking for counseling to support college and career choices, college admission support, financial aid. They talked about having one-on-one relationships with teachers as teacher advisors to support some of those decisions. They talked to me at length about us continually talking to you about MCAS, which is very important for Jessica as she prepares to take her MCAS, which again, is defining for her for a graduation requirement. What they said to us was, once we get beyond that, we need to be looking at our SAT. Can we have preparation classes to make sure that we can compete with other students getting into colleges? And I sat with our students a couple of weeks ago. So what you see happening now is the college acceptances are coming in. One young lady and Sharon, I probably won't have the right colleges, but she was accepted at three or four Ivy Leagues, one of them being Harvard. You know, it is just impressive where our students have opportunities to go and to continue to provide that kind of support for them, to make sure they can be competitive and to have those advisors. They talked about a lack of technology and they talked about the textbooks and talked about, not only were they woefully lacking, and when I say lacking, they were talking about copyrights with, you know, the same textbooks, two different years. And this is a struggle. Because when times get tough, what we end up doing is the most important thing for us is that teacher in the classroom in front of the students and technology suffers. You know, infrastructure to put together, you know, textbooks and come up with a plan in the district. Opportunities, again, is looking at technology-based curriculum textbooks which we've continued to do. The listening tours where I had an opportunity to meet with the parents and the community members. And again, this is coming from parents sharing thoughts during those listening tours, which again, when we go back to October, I believe we had six of those tours throughout the district. One where I had interpreters with our Haitian parents and I also had interpreters president with our Cape Verdean parents. And I want to congratulate our Cape Verdean community. When I was at East Middle School, we had the largest number of parents that came out. They came out in droves, over 150 of those parents came and shared their thoughts about the district. Some of the strengths they shared. Extracurricular at all levels. The two-way program at the George School, the TAD program. The relationship and the collaboration with Bridgewater State University. Support for youth with substance abuse problems, safety in our schools. Trained police officers in our schools, the GRADE program. Our school committee's commitment and our school committee's desire to again, bring on our emergency director to keep our schools safe. And our Brockton High School graduation that is inclusive of all children, our special education students and also a number of our pathway students during our Brockton High School graduation. Challenges. Our math scores, foreign language opportunities. Brockton High School's schedules, limitation on course selections. Inform decisions regarding high school opportunities. Culture and language differences feeling comfortable in our schools. Our suspension policy and students spending time out of school. Our Cape Verdean students opportunity to learn their own language. Our Brockton Public School website needs updating and support and a wait list for after-school programs and they're talking about the academic programs that we have. Opportunities. Support and advocacy centers for our special education and our bilingual parents. I'm happy to tell you as I sit here that we presently have a couple of spots. We will unveil next September an advocacy shared space with our special education parents and our bilingual parents. And they will be advocating for other parents in their centers. Our parent portal through Infinite Campus, we need to utilize that. We have it available, we need to talk about how we utilize that to start communicating with our parents through our parent portal. More programs for our autistic youngsters, our ASD population for social opportunities. An advisory committee where all cultures have a voice in the district. Support for youth and family workshops, examples such as the issues presently involving sexting and texting. We did have a workshop that we were going forward, we've had to actually cancel it a number of times. We will continue to do that in the district. It's this Thursday? Oh my goodness. It is this Thursday. So a message to parents, that is May 8th. Community service being a part of a graduation requirement. Creation of a special education advisory council that advises our school committee on SPED issues in the district. I am currently working with Director Laurie Mason and that is something that will be happening. More opportunities for SPED in community schools and after-school programs. And extended-year opportunities, academic opportunities for our needy students. We did have a parent and community survey, those of you looking at the book, although you look at that number and it's 27 and you say statistically, you know, does that make a difference? It does make a difference because that was an opportunity for those parents that could not be part of the actual listening tours to provide those same kind of comments as if they actually attended the listening tours. So although it's a small sample, I ask you to take a look at that. In closing, one of the things I want to share with you are, when we talk about all of that information, what now happens is emerging themes. And these are the themes that we are working on as we are doing our strategic planning. These become your strategic objectives, your big focus for the district going forward. It also includes our district review and our entry planning. So our emerging themes, Brockton Public Schools must provide leadership teams the time and human and financial resources to implement the district's vision of what is a 21st century education. And you see again, common planning time for all instructional teams at all levels. Redesign school and district schedules to support learning and teaching. Create a system of professional development for all members of the Brockton Public Schools. And district-wide assessment system to inform our instructional practice. The full successful implementation of the new educator evaluation system. This will improve instruction. And you all know that we have to have 100% evaluated and we will have that done by this June 30th, when we have to upload that information on the DESE portal. We're very confident. You know that we have put together an accelerated ed eval plan headed by ed eval specialists, Carrie Kopp, Michelle Connors, Dr. Moran, Kim Gibson. This has truly been a collaboration that we are proud of this year. The system should also be utilized to include recruitment, induction, support and development of a cadre of highly qualified administrators and educators. The increase in enrollment necessitates additional staff and administration to oversee growing populations, especially bilingual, special needs and early childhood. Issues of equity and compliance. Early childhood learning is the key to long-term academic success. And again, my facilities master plan. If you look at 2010, our enrollment has grown by 1,600 students. 53% of the increases in grades K to 5, they're not leaving us anytime soon. Our homeless students have increased by 30%. Our bilingual department has increased by 15%. The district has a critical need of increased technology and training, or a need for increased in technology and training. Online assessments, PARC, digital curriculum, 21st century skills. Estimated need for 11,000 new devices in five years. Professional development for utilizing technology in the classroom. Additional support personnel to maintain inventory and train our staff. And again, you look at that comment, our BHS students identified lack of technology is one of the biggest obstacles they face in preparing for college and career. What are our next steps? The development of our three-year Brockton Public School strategic plan, I told you that is in progress. We have already developed a new mission, which we will be unveiling. A new vision, mission, core values, we're presently working on in our subgroups, our theory of action. We've identified our four big strategic objectives. Our groups are working under those objectives to identify strategic initiatives and key action steps that will be the marching orders of our district for the next three years. And in closing, in talking about our emerging themes, I want to highlight when I mentioned to you our district review and actually taking that into account in doing our strategic planning. I want to highlight that many of the emerging themes identified from the work of our transition team with parents, students, school and community leaders, educators and stakeholders was supported by the DESE district review. In other words, none of this was a surprise to us. Brockton Public School needs to provide leadership teams the time and human and financial resources to implement the district's vision again, of what a 21st century education is. And just to highlight a couple of those notes from our district review. Curriculum and instruction. The district review stated instructional practices need to match the developmental and learning needs of the district's English language learner students with, and students with disabilities, were not consistently implemented throughout the school district. Our regularly scheduled common planning time for all teachers to participate in organized and professional learning communities occurs inconsistently and infrequently. The assessment system is conceptually well-designed and balanced. In classroom observation... In classroom observation, the team found mixed evidence of well-informed use of formative assessment. In human resources and professional development, despite the concerted efforts and committed intentions of many, professional development in the district suffers from limited central oversight and K to 12 coordination, allocated time and resources and formal teacher input and collaboration. We talked about the implementation of the state's new educator evaluation system. The increase in enrollment necessitates additional staff and administration to oversee the growing populations, especially bilingual, special needs and early childhood. Their comment fiscal and asset management, there is no long-term plan for capital needs with regard to building and equipment purchase, maintenance or changes in school enrollment. And lastly, the district has a critical need for increased technology and training. They talked about the use of instructional technologies in classroom was not sufficiently developed to support teaching and to enhance student learning. District-wide students have limited access to technology as an instructional tool. While I'm sharing with you some of the comments from the district review, I am very hopeful. I'm very hopeful that you have put together an excellent leadership team, you've put together staff, we have the people here that can marshal these orders forward. I am very excited to come to you in June and to unveil that strategic plan. And again, I thank you for this challenging, this opportunity and this commitment that we will make those needed changes and again, move our district forward in the Brockton Public Schools. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Well, I had an opportunity to read your plan over the weekend, in between the Bruins games, of course, but...
You had to mention that, Mr. Minicello?
Yes, they're losing two to nothing, right? Two to nothing from what I'm told.
Was that good or bad?
That's bad. They're losing. And you know, a lot of what you have in here, you know, I think that many of us on the committee have observed and certainly we're all in agreement. Technology is something that we've all been concerned with. You know, as mentioned previously to the audience, you know, our ELL population continues to grow, you know, in order to, I think, provide real results with that population, with the special ed population, the class size, the facilities that we have, needs to be addressed. So I think, I think you have unanimity with respect to your committee. So it's a matter of how we are going to do this together to move the district and the community, the school community forward. So I think we're all on board, it's just a matter of now we have to roll up our sleeves and figure out with the, you know, financial concerns and our budget we have, how we go about doing it efficiently. So, but I compliment you and I certainly compliment your team. This is a lot of work and a lot of good people involved in this. Knowing that you do attend all of those different functions and organizations, I don't know when you have time to do this, but you always get it done, so.
Thank you, and I'm glad you mentioned the team. I would be remiss if I, and I could certainly sit here all night if I were to thank everybody that took part in what has almost been a year-long event. You know, I've mentioned Richard Bath, our chair, my wonderful team from the beginning, many from community schools, Mary Beth McManus, who I worked with so many years ago and you all know is a very special mentor to me, just came back from Florida. I am thrilled to have her back as we prepare the strategic plan. And all of this was done in district. This was not with consultants, this is with your administrators, your teams. Jocelyn Meek and Laurie Silva have been working, you know, many, many hours putting together this booklet. I can't thank them enough. There's just, you know, so much support, I am very hopeful that we will get this done.
Mrs. Joyce?
Fantastic job, Kathy. This is very comprehensive. The collaboration is evident throughout this entry plan. And what you've done is you've really tackled the issues head-on, you've identified them and there's no running away from things that are tough. And that's what's going to really get us through to where we need to be to be able to, to service our, our students, all of our student populations. And I think you've done a fantastic job on this. I look forward to the next steps and, and going forward in June with, with how we're going to accomplish the goals. They're very, some of these are going to be really tough goals to accomplish, but if we don't identify them and stop making those steps, we'll never get there. So this is really great and I appreciate you taking the time and that's been evident in here and sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Henningson?
I just wanted to say, I want to thank you publicly for, I would echo, you know, many sentiments that you said about, you know, attending various functions and events. You know, we're blessed to have such an active superintendent that has really, you know, reached out to the community, the parents, the students, the community leaders and all the stakeholders in this to gather their opinion on what we need as a district. And I thank you for all your hard work and the hard work that all your staff has done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think in closing, I will mention to you tomorrow is the last day for this year of my new superintendent induction program. When I tell you it's all day, we work all day. And I believe tonight in the audience is my wonderful coach and mentor, Dr. Jim Marini. And again, the new superintendent induction program is wonderful as far as supporting what is a strategy, what is a theory of action? And they are there to, to support. Your superintendent, you have 23 new superintendents in this state and their goal is to make sure that we are successful as a district and we are able to, you know, to support what needs to be supported in our district. So thank you, Dr. Marini.
Items to refer to, subcommittee? Is there anything? Mrs. Joyce?
I'd just like to add to the agenda on our next finance subcommittee meeting, this initiative that's been brought forth by Ms. Balboni on the freshman, freshman field hockey team. I'd like to learn more about it and how, you know, learn more about the viability of the program and also about the fiscal aspects of it as we go through the budget process to see if this is something that we can consider at this point. So I'd like to invite Ms. Balboni, if she can make it, to that meeting to, or a representative that can give us those answers so we can learn more about this initiative.
Okay. Why don't we have Mr. Thomas consult with Ms. Balboni and maybe if you need Aldo involved as well? And then if you would like to come to our next finance subcommittee meeting or provide Mr. Thomas with the information, we will certainly discuss that as an agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Any unfinished business? No? Okay. New business, the 2014-2015 supplemental school calendar, item number 21.
One of the things I will note is in the supplemental calendar, we have an increase in a number of our professional development half-days. At Brockton High School, we have two additional days next year. And at our elementary school level, we have included three additional half-days.
Okay. And that would go to obviously the needs and the items that you outlined for us previously, I mean, just recently.
We will be working, Deputy Superintendent Liz Barry will be working with her team to put together a calendar of professional development. We'll share that with you so you have ahead of time what is happening in the district during those professional development days.
Okay. Okay, do we need to vote on that? To accept it? Yes, or is this just a draft for us to review?
Draft.
Just a draft? Okay. So we don't need to vote on it? All right. Thank you. Okay. Next item, report of the bid review subcommittee meeting, which was held this evening. Okay. So, the bid review subcommittee met at 6:48 PM tonight. Present were Ms. Alicia Clark, Mrs. Judy Sullivan and myself. At that meeting, we discussed two items. We discussed awarding the bid with respect to the BHS Planetarium and that was the company Spitz Planetarium. And Mr. Petronio pointed out as a point of interest that that was the company that originally installed the original Planetarium projector. So history repeats itself, so. And we also discussed at that time warehouse space with respect to our facility maintenance department and our general warehousing due to the fact that the Cochrane Building is being taken offline. So we need a warehouse. So, those were the items discussed and I would like someone to make a motion to accept the report of the subcommittee.
Motion to accept the, excuse me, motion to accept the minutes of the bid review subcommittee.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then with respect to that report, the Spitz Planetarium Company was the only company to respond to our bid. And Mr. Petronio did his due diligence and determined that that amount that they bid was in, in the realm of appropriateness for the project. So we would like the committee to ratify our report and vote to award that contract to the Spitz Planetarium Company. Would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Clark, how about you? You're the one I'm calling on tonight.
Motion to approve the bid of the Spitz Planetarium project.
To Spitz Planetarium Company?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Okay. And then the second item is to award the bid with respect to the warehouse to the Foster Street facility due to the fact that I think all of us on the committee went and visited the two sites that were in contention. And I think we all agreed that the Foster Street site was better suited and more economical. And the bid review subcommittee voted to award that and I'm just asking for someone to make a motion to ratify that bid. How about you, Mrs. Sullivan?
Motion to ratify the bid for the Foster Street warehouse.
Perfect. Okay. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. That was, that was very much appreciated. Okay. Next item, closing of the FY14 school budget. Do we need Mr. Petronio for that?
We've come to that time of year again, we're reviewing the spending that we have currently in the budget and looking forward to what I consider our pre-buying period for next year. I feel it's necessary to close the FY14 budget, all discretionary spending and only allow at this point anything that's been contracted or that's on a time payment such as, you know, electricity, gas, tuition bills from this point further.
Okay. Any questions or further discussion from any of the committee members? If there are sort of exigent circumstances and a principal needs to approach administration, what is the process, Mr. Petronio?
Process, send a request to myself, to either deputy, you know, and we'll inform the superintendent, I will bring it up at our meeting and decide whether it's appropriate or not.
Okay. Okay. Someone want to make a motion to close the FY14 budget? Thank you, Ray. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Any special matters that anyone would like to discuss or add for next time with the superintendent? Or anything to be added to the agendas aside from naturally Mrs. Joyce's suggestion about the field hockey? No?
Can I just make one more comment this evening?
Sure.
So Friday evening, I had the opportunity to go to Massasoia Community College and see the production of The Wizard of Oz. And I grew up during a time when it was very, very different as far as there was no cable, there were very few stations and the highlight of the year was when The Wizard of Oz came on TV. That was a big night. And to sit at Massasoia Community College with one of our teachers in the music department and I see Maestro McCreener up there, Jen Sterling, had students from the Baker School, there were 50 that performed last weekend, another 50 will perform this weekend. They were the munchkins in the production. Hands down, fabulous, excellent. The kids were so excited. It was, I loved it. I relived my childhood. It was, they even had a real toto. It was just, just great to see this. If you get an opportunity, please go and support those youngsters. Thank you to Jen, thank you to Principal Ryan Powers of the Baker School. It's a community theater. We also had our counselor-at-large, Shayna Barnes, taking part in the community production. Just excellent.
Great. Anyone else? Mr. Henningson?
I just wanted to thank the Fine Arts Cafe. Yesterday, we had a opportunity to meet with our state delegation and I wanted to thank the Fine Arts Cafe and the students for just putting on a great luncheon. It was just absolutely fantastic and for those out there, they're open on Thursdays and Fridays during lunch periods. So come down and, and see what our kids can do. They're, they're amazing. I mean, I wish I could cook that good.
Dr. Moran, I think you should take our administrative interns there for a field
I guess there's no objection to that. Anyone else? Just for informational purposes, tomorrow evening at City Hall at 7 o'clock, there will be the, the joint convention of the school committee and city council chaired by the mayor, who is the official moderator according to ordinance with respect to filling the Ward 6 school committee seat. There are a number of candidates, candidates who have qualified are invited if they so choose to come and speak to the panel, basically addressing the panel and if they feel like stating why they are interested and/or provide any information they feel is relevant, they're free to do so. It will be a short opportunity, it's not going to be a, 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 a great period of time. I'm not sure, we'll decide tomorrow evening how many minutes people will have to speak, but that's what's going on at City Hall tomorrow at 7 o'clock. And I believe we will choose someone tomorrow evening. So that's the plan as of right now, so. Anything else? How about a motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you for attending. All in favor? So adjourn.